Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all. You may be seated. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And we're going to start off with some employee introductions.
Alex, Justin, come on up to the podium. Mayor, Commissioners, I am proud and very pleased to introduce to you our two newest members of the Customer Experience Department. This is our customer experience representatives, Alex Sherwood and also Justin Warmuth. Alex actually brings with her a master's degree in organizational communication. She is originally from Morocco and gained her U.S. citizenship in 2006, and she lives now in McCracken County with her husband. Alex, thank you for being here. We also have Justin Warmuth. He comes to us with 15 years of experience in customer service as well as experience in contracting and subcontracting, and he lives here in Paducah with his wife and two children. We welcome him onboard.
Excellent. All right, we're going to move into a presentation about a recent workshop that our staff put on. I'm going to ask Lindsay if you'll lead that discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. So the Shift Workshop was held November 7th through the 9th with a total of 13 of our citizens participating. The goal of it was to bring together creatives with business people and community members to create projects for Paducah. And we hosted that here in Paducah along with our partnership with the Kentucky Arts Council and the Air Institute of Berea College. And out of that came two different projects that you're going to hear about tonight that are a great opportunity. Both were partially funded by the Kentucky Arts Council and through a grant program that they have, and they're still needing some additional funding, so this is a great way for them to get the word out about the projects they're going to be putting on. So the first one is Arts in the Park. If I can have Will come up, and the group that put this together is actually Will Brandon, Lexi Milliken, Camille Bryant, Kezza Hausman, Corey Green, and Megan Musselman. They were not all able to be here today, but they're going to tell you a little bit about Arts in the Park.
All right, I'm just going to set a timer for myself.
Will, pull your microphone up, Will. There you go.
We good?
Yep.
Good, okay. So as you know, like she talked about, we are participants in the Shift Workshop, and the biggest goal for that is to create a project that can be made in at least a year's time for under $10,000. So the project that we came up with is called Arts in the Park, and the goal of this is to take a summer, so it was the full, the four Saturdays in July of 2020. And in this, we would highlight four different parks in the community with four different organizations and activities for the children around that area. So we are aiming to provide artist experiences for elementary students throughout the inner city of Paducah, but all children in Paducah would be invited, of course. The goal is to, we want to have a free avenue for families who may not have money for vacations during the summer. In July, sports stop in June, so July gets an extra bump in activity. Also, having this on a Saturday is a chance for, a lot of the meal assistance programs stop Monday through Friday, so Saturday is a day that we can have food and provide food for these children. So the main goal is, we have identified four parks in the area: Noble Park, Kyler Park, Cole Park, and Robert Coleman Park. All of these, we chose these because they're hopefully in walking or close distances to the schools that we chose that I'll talk about in a second. And also, these all have shelters. July is hot, and it's important for weather and just for shade. We wanted to have something to do with that. So each Saturday would highlight a different park, and then we would partner with four different organizations. The ones that we have listed, we want to give a chance for both the performance and visual arts. So we have talked about partnering with Paducah Symphony for Music, Market House Theater for acting and stage play, the Paducah School of Art and Design for mixed media applications, and for the Paducah Area Painters Alliance to highlight painting. The goal of this and having these in the parks is for, we would invite the children at the local schools. So the ones that we have highlighted are McNabb Elementary, Clark Elementary, and Morgan Elementary. These are fairly in close proximity to these areas, so children are able to come, bring their families. And like I said, while we are focusing on these areas, we want to make it clear that all city children would be invited, because it's the summer, they want something to do. And we also want to increase awareness to our local parks, because I know that I listed Noble Park, which everyone knows, and there's Carson Park, but there are so many awesome and small parks throughout the city that could hold things like this, and some people didn't know about it. I know that I didn't know that some of these existed before doing this research. So we have, as part of our project, we have both qualitative and quantitative ways to measure success. Like I said, we want to bring awareness to these parks, bring new activities and things there, and ultimately we want to bring confidence to these kids when it comes to the arts. We want them to leave having a sense of, they know of a new organization in the arts. They have new skills, hopefully, when they leave. They become confident that I can do this, I have a part of this, and know that there are avenues of things that aren't just, you know, your traditional arts out there. So we also want to give an avenue for kids to be able to communicate through the summer with both people they go to school with in that local area, and also hopefully bring in more kids out of the area to have them meet. We have a marketing goal. We've been able to put a budget together. We've kept our budget at $8,400, tentatively, with part of that being in-kind, but we have done a lot of this knowing that even though we could have, we think that we could have better partnerships with our local organizations and things like that, we wanted to make sure that this project can be replicable, and we don't want money to be an issue. So even if we take out some of the in-kind expenses that we would hopefully have partnering with Paducah Parks and Rec, we are still able to feasibly make this happen. So kind of our goal is, we would hire a project manager for this project. This is not like a year-long job or anything like that. It's all within our budget and personnel, and we would pay someone to work in partnership with Paducah Parks, because we know that they do tons of awesome things already, and we don't want to have to add a new thing on their plate and have them do all the legwork. So we have someone that will work with them, and basically hopefully Paducah Parks will be able to kind of do crowd control, give us access to the parks, help us learn more about the parks as well. And we want to work in conjunction with them and not just put this on their plate. And then hopefully, doing so, we would have representatives from each organization that I listed come and volunteer their times, send representatives. And then, as far as marketing, we're not out a lot of money, because we are focusing on these schools and such, and because we condensed everything into that one summer area, summer, the four Saturdays in July. It's a way to, we only have print materials and things like that, obviously social media with our, you know, partnering organizations and things like that, but it should be easy to hopefully get the word out in May or April that these kids have something to look forward to during the summer. And our ultimate goal is, with this, is we know, most of us know as adults, the value of the arts and stuff in our community, and we aren't trying to get these kids to be followers of that, but to teach them how to be leaders in their own fields and leaders of the arts of the future that we may not be able to see now. So I guess I'll open it up to questions or anything like that. Thanks.
That sounds great. Wow. How much did the Kentucky Arts Council fund you?
They funded us at $4,200, so basically half of our project, yes.
So people who are watching on YouTube and in this audience tonight, they need to raise another $4,200 to make this happen. That's exciting.
And like I said, we, our biggest goal is, goal of it is that we think that there's tons of awesome things that we can do for not a lot of money and partnerships and things like that, but we wanted to make sure strictly for this project and the parameters that we had, that this is feasible monetarily, but that's not taking into account the generosity that our community has with everyone and how much we want to take care of our local kids.
Can I tell you that when I, when we were doing the neighborhood walk, Jotun, did you guys make it to Jotun? Do you remember? At Coleman Park, we met Coleman Park?
Yes, that was impressive.
And they were, it was a big group, first of all, but they were, were you there? Okay. And you might have been part of the group that was telling me, they were reminiscing about the days when our Parks Department actually did programming in all those parks. So, you were? Well, no wonder you're on this team.
Camille is a valuable asset to this community.
I was the community asset where we had business partners in arts. I was the community part and was just thankful that I could bring just an idea that they could expand on and make it grow.
She's incredible, so, yeah.
That's great. Any other questions from the Commissioner or comments?
What about replication? You mentioned before about making sure that it's just one month in July. Are you looking at doing this on an annual basis?
I think the goal also was so it could be replicated in another community.
Yeah, but part of the, part of the Shift Workshop parameters is for replicable projects and not just our community, but, and not even similar projects to this, but being able to recreate it in different ways, different forms, because, you know, if we wanted to create a new barbecue on the river, we could have done that. It's just that we wanted it, it could be done here, anywhere else, anything like that, yeah.
And there's so, so many more forms of art that you can do just with this painting, we can do sculpting, somebody can do glass blowings. There's just so many things that you can do in different parks. There's just no limit what art is concerned.
Absolutely.
Well, I think I said before, I had the honor of being one of the judges, so I'm just so proud of both of your projects, because they're going to be great for our community. So congratulations again. I got to tell you that day, but congratulations again to both of you.
Very creative.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good? All right, thank you all.
Our next group is representing a project called Pockets in Paducah. This was developed by George Abert, Corbin Snarden, Kristy Casey, Arthur Williams, and Jennifer England.
This mic is not for the vertically inclined. No offense to those who are not vertically inclined. Good evening to all the Commissioners and the citizens of Paducah. So, our project, as you can see on the screen, is called Pockets in Paducah. So at the Shift Workshop, we were able to come up with a very unique idea, which you're about to hear, but first, I do, I definitely want to thank Lindsay Parrish and the city for putting on this workshop. It's very innovative to bring together creatives and business people to be able to fund some of these ideas. So, with Pockets in Paducah, our idea focuses on the notion of taking abandoned lots or vacant lots and repurposing them for beautification and artistic expression. So, nobody wants to see a lot like this. It's kind of dilapidated, or something like this. But what if we were able to turn it into something like this? Or even this? In fact, the city has actually done it before. We've actually been able to do this, and this is in our own very downtown. So Pockets in Paducah focuses on, again, taking those vacant, abandoned or distressed properties and being able to turn them into unique items. So in this particular case, that's a pocket park, but it could be a community garden, it could be a playground, it could be, another pocket park is what you see on the screen. The limitations are endless for what could happen, for what would be created for these abandoned properties that exist throughout the city. As we know, that there are several lots that the city has tried to sell off and that there are many still now that are privately owned that may be in various states of disrepair. So we were going to, our initial idea was to do neighborhood surveys to see what the communities want. It's very important that we don't impress our ideas upon the community, but, you know, if that's a pocket park, if they want, that's fantastic, but maybe they want a community garden or another playground or some other way to beautify the communities in which they live in for these distressed and vacant properties. So we've even included that to mean zen gardens, internet access, like Wi-Fi hotspots. So the, like I said, the expressions that we could have are limitless. And I'm going to turn it over here to my other partner in the team, Mr. Albert here, and he's going to highlight some of the successes and things that we want to see out of this project.
Well, the main thing you'll have is community engagement, possibly as I show here, children playing, gardeners working in their gardens, senior citizens gathering, viewing and interacting with art. The idea is that these pocket parks are going to be surrounded by neighborhoods. There are several defined neighborhoods that have these, and getting people to go to these things, getting activity to happen, that's going to improve the neighborhood for everybody. And the audience, the neighborhood residents and the city residents at large, so you could have events at these things. So it's completely possible that you could have art shows. There are already on the South Side, certain, I guess, barbecues and things like that. These kinds of things could be programmed at these places. The partners, city of Paducah, neighborhood associations, so that would be our soft infrastructure. We have existing neighborhood associations. We have the planning department, the library, and the local schools that'll be involved.
So as far as our marketing and budgetary goes within that, so if the property is owned by the city, we already have the infrastructure built in to be able to effectively market through the media streams that exist now, whether that be the city website, the city Instagram or Facebook page, those avenues already exist. It would be hopeful that we would be able to incorporate that if it were a privately funded property, but focusing on city properties, the infrastructure does exist there. And since we are in the digital age, being able to market even farther through even more social media platform streams, I know Facebook is the pretty common one that the city uses, but also Instagram, you know, I'm a millennial, so you know Twitter, YouTube, Snapchat, and all the other stuff that goes in there. All of these different mediums are very, very good to do that, especially the old-fashioned word of mouth, to be able to bring that around. As for our budgetary goals, so we budgeted for $7,600, and that would fund everything from artist compensation, infrastructure, marketing and advertising, and also different promotional activities that we would have amongst that. So within our project for Shift, we were initially funded $800 for further consultation, because obviously this is a very big idea. I'm a big idea person. So this is a very, very big idea, and to be able to concretely be able to replicate it across the city in different lots, we would have to really invest and see what are the specific needs for whatever neighborhood we decided to do this in. But that is our presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions? I was wondering, so until you got to the end, I was wondering how many of these you could do with $7,600.
Right, so...
But then I heard you say there's $800 available to further figure that out, so that's...
Yeah, so it really goes based off of neighborhood surveys and figuring out what people in that community want. Again, we don't want to impress our views upon different neighborhoods. You know, a community garden is relatively inexpensive, but a pocket park obviously involves much more monetary funding. So again, it would just really depend on what the neighborhood decided.
Any other questions?
Nope.
That was enough for the Kentucky Arts Council to come back to do a full study with you to get them ready, I think, for moving on to the next step.
That's great. Thank you all so much for this. That's great. All right. Next up, we have Frank Bennett from the National Quilt Museum.
Clearly, all these people came to see me.
Who doesn't want an update from the quilt?
Exactly, exactly. Happy Thanksgiving, giving everybody. Move this just a bit here. All right, well, as you guys know who have been here a few years, in fact, I think in your first week you were here, one of the first meetings that you were at, every year I come up and I give a little update on the Quilt Museum. This year, I'm going to do it a little bit different, where I'm going to make the update a little bit brief. I'm just going to go through, I took out a few slides, because I want to go a little deeper into what's possible in the future. So let's start running right through this. So there are three types of admissions to the Quilt Museum. The most common thing is people come in a car, they go to the front desk, they pay an admission, this is easily trackable, a monetary transaction occurred. We'll talk about that a little bit more later. Second is events and workshops. We have events all year long. In fact, the very next one that's going to be big and is open to the public is that if anybody wants to come on January 14th at 1:00, quilts devour. About 20 of those folks are going to be getting quilts at the Quilt Museum. It's a fantastic event for veterans, so watch your calendar, but if you want to put that on your calendar, everyone here is invited. So the third one is things that are free, and so one of the biggest parts of what we do for the community is our free programs, which is mostly for kids. Over 3,000 kids participate in programs at the Quilt Museum every year. Over 90% of them are free, which means we need to find that money somewhere else to continue doing that for, for the community. The picture that you're seeing is actually a governor's scholars group that I'm speaking to, but it happens all year long, and obviously it's a huge asset artistically. There's a lot of these programs. We could spend an hour just on this. There's onsite programs at schools, workshops, and so on. I had to throw a picture in of cute kids or else I would not really be able to sell this effectively. Don't act like you didn't think that. So this is the actual, we've gone into this deeper, so this is a summary. So we were talking about the front-end visitors, the folks that actually pay, come in a car, show up. The average person who comes to the National Quilt Museum traveled about 180 miles. They're in Paducah for about 30 hours. It's a mix of about 40% cultural tourists, which are people who go to art museums, 55% quilters, 5%, we just don't know. They have money to spend, and they, on average, and this will come up later, will spend $300 to $400 while they're in our community. I deep dove into that last time. We can do that another time. It's a mix of meals and shopping on Broadway and different things, spending money. That's for a different day. You guys get the reports I now send out monthly about the geographic reach, so you see that, and thank you for reading them. So you see that in an average month, we get visitors from pretty much 45 to 50 states around the country and 10 to 20 countries worldwide. It really is a global destination museum. Every single day, I see people who woke up in Australia just to come to the National Quilt Museum, which is really one of the most fun things about working at the National Quilt Museum. So I presented this last year, and what this is, is I've been here for about eight years, eight and a half right now, and this is our front desk visitors. So this is just the people who came in and paid admission. This isn't the free folks, this isn't the events, this is just general churn admission that we can track. In 2011, we had about 23,600 visitors come, took it up to 25 in '12, 28 in '13, 14, 28, '19, 15, 29, '07. Sorry about that. I'm not perfect, I'm just not. Took it back up a little bit more in '17, and then in '18, we inked it up a little bit more, which basically means that in the last eight years, our visitors coming to our city to go to the National Quilt Museum has increased about 50%.
Congratulations.
So an easy, thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. And the other thing I'll add to that is the easy thing I tell people a lot in speeches is that means three people are in our town spending money as tourists for every two that were here eight years ago. We're going to look into this a little bit deeper later on. I always like to use this slide because it talks about two great things that need to continue for a long time. AQAS has a great show in April every year. I would like to see it happen till the end of time. It is great tourism for our city. It's great for really this entire economy that we have. It's fantastic. But they're actually, their event that week is about 15% of our visitors for the year. The thing that gets lost is that they have a fantastic event that I'd like to see forever. We have a fantastic museum, I think, and we both are bringing people in every single month all year long. I have no access to AQAS's numbers, they're a different company, obviously, but we're basically looking at 60,000 to 70,000 unique visitors to Paducah between what we're bringing in every single month and their event. I like to point this out, because sometimes it gets blurred, it's not the same people, it's unique people every single month coming to Paducah for quilting. So, how many of you guys and really everybody here have been traveling somewhere and said you're from Paducah, and the person said, "I know Paducah because of the National Quilt Museum"? I should have said, "How many haven't?" Excellent. That guy. That guy. That was well over 90% of the room. Without a doubt, the most common way someone in the world knows about Paducah is because of the National Quilt Museum. We could talk about this for an hour. We could talk about global reach of our brand. I don't have that time, but I'm going to point out three examples. On the slide that you see, you think you're looking at the front of our museum, but what that actually is, is a quilt show in Japan. They were so excited to get an exhibit of quilts from the National Quilt Museum in Paducah that in a convention center, they recreated at scale our entire building. If you go to the National Quilt Museum's YouTube, you'll see about a two-minute video of, like, really, do it right now, you got your phones, you can do this. You'll see a two-minute video of somebody walking around the building showing all of it. It has the grass, it has the brick things that are there. If you go this way, the signed National Quilt Museum is there, which I asked them if they would send me, but it was going to cost a whole bunch of money. But they were so excited to get an exhibit from us, they made it the center point of their massive quilt show. This isn't, this is a convention center-style quilt show. Also, notice the security guard there? From what I understand, there were guards at all three entrances, and at some point, there were lines that circled around the inside of the place. This is me on Houston AM television about 4:30 in the morning. The bigger point is that 200,000 people a day watch that show, and that's me talking about Paducah and the Quilt Museum. And we get continual media that's talking about Paducah. You guys saw this one last year with Southern Living. Just last week, we were mentioned on ABC News. It has to do with a program that has to be called Reader's Quilt. You're going to see more of that come up in the next couple of months. But basically, every month, we're mentioned in some kind of national or international... But basically, every month, we're mentioned in some kind of national or international media, which just brings more attention to Paducah. So I want to, at the end of my presentation every year, all of you guys have heard me say, "We've barely scratched the surface." Used to this? It's a pretty common thing. This year, I'm going to deep dive this a little bit further. So you may not know this, but there's actually an entire another town in the United States that also promotes quilt tourism. It's in a place called Hamilton, Missouri, which is a little bitty town. It's less than a third of the size of our town. And we're going to break down the demographics of who they are and who we are. So the National Quilt Museum of Paducah started in '91. They started their tourist attraction, which is that building right there, in 2013. What it is, is there's a brand, there's a company called Missouri Star, and this town is a spur-of-off of a bigger business, where they started by being an e-commerce platform, an e-commerce selling platform, and then have gone into other businesses. So they started in 2013, about 20 years after us. Our nickname is Quilt City USA, their nickname is Quilt Town USA. You'll see a trend. Their key, our key assets is that honestly, the National Quilt Museum is one of the most well-known buildings in all of quilting. I actually would say it is the most known building, but then I get emails. Also, we get to have one of the biggest quilt shows in the United States every single year. Two huge assets. What they're known for is a woman named Jenny Doan has a YouTube station where she teaches people techniques on quilting, and she's one of the most famous online social media personalities in quilting. Her videos have been watched millions of times. She's the thing. Most of the people who go to what they do there in Hamilton are folks that follow her on YouTube. And please do, her stuff's great. We're on a major highway, as you guys know, I-24 gets over 50,000 cars a day. They're on Missouri Route 13, which is about an hour outside of Kansas City and is mostly a two-lane highway, significantly fewer people. And then their tourism assets are, well, for us, we're UNESCO Creative City, we have a phenomenal lower town, we have arts assets all over our downtown and lower town, we're a destination. They have the J.C. Penney Museum. There was no way that wasn't going to be funny.
What would be in that?
I don't know. I actually haven't been there.
Catalogues. It's catalogues. Yeah.
Yeah, but that's their other asset. Like I said, it's a very small town. Before I get to the visitors, take a look at the screen and ask yourself, just internally, which one of these you think is bigger? Last year, everyone, including free people, we had about 41,000 people come to the National Quilt Museum. They had about 250,000. Now you're probably asking, "How is this happening?"" And it is only one thing, and it is the most basic thing that happens in all of business. They are able to out-market me in spending for marketing well over 10 to 1. And that is the only reason this is happening. In fact, small side note on this, someone who works in Hamilton was at our Quilt Museum about two months ago and saw me, just knows me from being around quilting, and was talking about, "Yeah, we're really growing there, we've got great things going on, someday we might be half the size you guys are." Because she perceived we were bigger than them, because our brand in quilting is bigger than them. The difference is, they have a lot more money to spend in marketing, and I don't. That is the only difference. Not only can we be at those numbers, we have a much bigger audience outside of quilting that are art quilt, we can be bigger than that. It's just about maximizing the equity of our tourism asset. The thing I'm going to end, so what I did was, our economic, you know, I saw the thing about $300 to $350 spent per person that comes. If you multiply that out by 41,000 people, our annual economic impact is 14 million to 18 million a year. If you take the same amount, so they were actually coming to Paducah, 300 to 350 per person, and we had their number of visitors, our annual economic impact would be 90 to 100 million dollars a year. It would be a treasure trove of things that we could fund. I'm going to end with just two points, which is the reason I went through this tonight. We are at a wonderful time in Paducah. There are these fantastic conversations about the future going on. We're talking about downtown stuff, stuff around Broadway, sports complex, athletic complexes. I'm very excited about the future of Paducah. Oh, I just switched a slide for no reason. But at the end of the day, the only thing I'd like to throw into the discussion is that our slogan as a city is "Be the Best." And for us to be the best, in addition to doing these fantastic new projects, which are going to be great, let's fully maximize the equity of our current cultural tourism assets. And that's what I had to say. Thank you very much for listening.
That's great. I'm over here brainstorming the Frank Bennett YouTube channel, though. Come on, Jenny, give us some competition.
Yeah, I actually do, I'm busy, but I do quite a bit of going to events and talking and what have you. It's a funny thing that I live this life where I'll go to shows and events and quilting, and I'm a celebrity in that world, and then I come back here, and I don't even know how to explain that to somebody.
All these people came to see you. What are you talking about?
So...
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions?
Comments? Thank you very much.
Obviously, we're going to see changes soon in the state arts and culture and tourism cabinet, so I think it's really important that we make sure that we get the word to them quickly about you and about our community. And I know Mary Hammond and the rest of us will be in Frankfurt regularly to do that, but this is a really great story to tell, so thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, speaking of Mary Hammond, I'm going to bring Mary up along with Cindy Jones from the Civic Beautification Board to give out awards.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, whoops. Speaking of vertically challenged...
There you go.
Thank you for allowing us to be part of the commission meeting tonight. I'm here with Cindy Jones, and she is the Chair of the Paducah Civic Beautification Board. And we have other members. Anybody raise your hand? Jackie's here. Dabney's back here. We're here to give out the 2019 Annual Business Awards. Each recipient tonight is a prime example of good citizenship, people and businesses who believe in the community, invest their heart, soul, and their savings in Paducah. They're not just one-time investors, but people who believe in the long-term investment in the city, people who see our built heritage as one worth saving, people who recognize beauty and the potential in our community. So let's start with Paul Gourier and Jorge Martinez, whose latest project, The Johnson Bar, at 133 South Third Street. The Johnson Bar beautified a sad corner of downtown Paducah. Now there stands a beautifully restored historic building full of life, cocktails, music, friends, in a very sophisticated setting. I understand there'll be residential offerings on the second floor, and I think that's the dream of every city planner. Thank you, Paul and Jorge, for continuing to invest in Paducah. And you know what? We look forward to you next project. We all watched Midtown come into its own the last few years. Oscar Gamble started a men's clothing store at 32nd and Broadway in an old gas station, and that business has been an anchor in the neighborhood for the past 25 years. The Banks family has owned the store since 2002, but the past year, the Banks siblings gave HB and Company a crisp, modern look. James Banks, thank you and your family for their continued commitment to Paducah. And the next generation, we love this. We love third-generation businesses. While they're getting a photo, we'll move on. We all know and love Melinda Winchester and her passion for preservation. It only seems right that Melinda and Carrie would take on the renovation of the beloved Belle Louise. Your vision for a historic guesthouse at 304... Yikes. Okay, 304, the screen's going crazy. 304 North Sixth Street is one we know will enhance lower town and encourage other restoration projects. I'm sure that before the doors are open, we will all come to know a little bit more about the fascinating history of the building and its place in Paducah's past. The Niehof family has never been afraid of hard work. They are entrepreneurs through and through, you may know that. There's always a project. It's not surprising that Sam and Jonas, with help from the rest of the family, took on the renovation of 502 North Fifth Street. You may remember it as Paper Pieces, and before that, Breyer Patch Studio. The bed and breakfast beautifully offers a short period of rest and relief. Thank you, Sam, for offering Paducah an experience like no other. You know these brothers, they work. Jenny Hudson, your retirement's been good for Paducah. The vision you, Chris, Will, and Caroline had for the old Frenchtown neighborhood inspires all of us. Slim's Frenchtown Mercantile, 125 North 11th Street, is a second project for the Hudson family. We honor your commitment to using historic preservation as a tool for small business development and neighborhood revitalization. Now, you may think the only goal of Paducah Power is to provide electrical services, but I looked at their mission statement, and it includes "Be a valued partner in the community and its development." Thank you, Paducah Power, for your investment in the old Sears Building, 1500 Broadway, and the continued improvements to beautify both the building and the campus. Andrea, thanks to you and the staff of Paducah Power for Christmas in the park and half million twinkling lights. This is all good stuff. I'm glad everyone's patient tonight, everybody's talk. All right, in 2013, Gabrielle and Daniel Dodd found the lack of options for those looking for plant-based, vegan, or vegetarian diets, and started preparing sweet treats and selling them at the Paducah Farmer's Market. By March 2017, they had opened Branch Out Foods in the Ritz Midtown. And just this past year, they expanded by renovating 713 Kentucky Avenue, the old rash cycle building. We applaud your efforts and the creative additions to Paducah's menu offerings. Daniel, I think you're here. All right. Just a few years ago, our community was in turmoil over what to do with City Hall, an aging, mid-century structure. We all acknowledge the design by world-famous architect Edward Earl Stone. We love the vision of a restored building, but could we? Should we? Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for standing firm in seeing that this magnificent building was given another chapter. How proud we all are of the beautiful restoration and the feel of a city hall full of life. Melinda Winchester, we have you to thank as well for your never-ending belief in the project. Won't you come, Mayor?
Yes.
We don't get to honor the city very often. Jim, you and I are the worker bees. One last award, and it feels a bit strange, my own office, Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau. You may, yeah, you may remember the storm on July 30, 2018, a duratio. I'm going to read this. "A widespread, long-lived, straight-line windstorm that's associated with a fast-moving group of severe thunderstorms." Yep. That's what hit the building at 128 Broadway. The 1880s building was heavily damaged. Now, we moved out of that roofless building in one day, the hottest day of the year, no electricity, moving tarps to get to the office and the files. We split up into temporary quarters, and you can imagine, the last year and a half, they weren't easy, so many changes. But we're pleased to be back in our building, in the beautiful restoration, we're loving it. We thank our friends at Ray Blackinson, who also had a hand, in that project and many others that we've talked about tonight. Actually, I'm thankful for Paducah's contractors and the knowledge they've gained along the way, and now we turn to them when we have a project that needs to be restored. Thank you. So with that, I urge each one of you to thank these entrepreneurs for their investment and to encourage others to move ahead with their dreams. The Beautification Board has already started a list for the 2020 Business Awards. We've already got a list. There have already been beautiful businesses opening or having significant improvements just since we turned this list in in October. So the Paducah Civic Beautification Board appreciates you, friends and neighbors, for the care you give to your homes and your businesses, and it's because of your efforts that the Dogwood Trail Celebration has been a success for over 50 years. That said, lighting up isn't just for dogwoods, so let's get into the holiday spirit. Thank you. I'm feeling very thankful.
Absolutely. Thank you all. I also want to say thank you to the Civic Beautification Board. Seriously, thank you all so much for your time and energy in honoring those who have invested in our community, and thank you all who are here, who have invested in our community and started new businesses. How exciting is that? I also want to say really quickly, since Mary's in the room, congratulations, Mary Hammond, on your Kentucky Travel Tourism Award. Mary was honored with the highest award you can get in the state of Kentucky, and you deserve it. I'm going to give those of you who want to leave a chance to leave, because sometimes there's kind of awkward moments. So if you want to go on, have a good night. We're so glad you were here. We won't shame you at all. Happy Thanksgiving. All right, while they're leaving, I'm going to move into the consent agenda and get into the business portion of our meeting. I do want to remind, if anyone is here to speak about an issue that's on this agenda, there are comment cards over by the door, and they go into this box right here. Please do that sooner than later, so that we can make sure we call you up at the appropriate time. And we're going to move into the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight for discussion? No? All right, with that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the November 12, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting and the November 14, 2019 joint call meeting of the Board of Commissioners and the McCracken County Fiscal Court. Approved reappointment of Lorraine Schramke to the Planning Commission. This term shall expire August 31, 2023. Approved appointment of Valerie Pollitt to the Planning Commission to replace John Shadle, whose term has expired. This term shall expire August 31, 2023. Approved appointment of David Barnett to the Board of Ethics to replace Ari Gerji, who's resigned. This term shall expire February 10, 2020. Approved appointment of Anya Losota to the Civic Beautification Board. This term shall expire July 1, 2023. Approved reappointment of William Cox, Bill Pinkston, and Neil Carroll to the Brooks Stadium Commission. Said term shall expire December 5, 2023. Receive and file documents. Personnel actions. A municipal order accepting grant funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, K.O.H.S., for a 2019 grant award in the amount of $442,181.76 for the purchase of an EOD robot for the Paducah Police Department's FBI-certified bomb squad, and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement and all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a renewal application to the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Housing, Buildings, and Construction for the local expanded jurisdiction for the Fire Prevention Division. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an African-American Civil Rights Preservation Project Grant, application through the National Park Service, NPS, in the amount of $10320 on behalf of the Hotel Metropolitan to make necessary repairs and renovations to ensure the functionality of the hotel, including repairs to the roof, flooring, deck, railing, doors, windows, exterior paint job, new interior signage, and authorizing the grants administrator to submit the grant application. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a Save America's Treasures Preservation Project Grant, application from the Historic Preservation Fund, which is administered by the National Park Services in the amount of $200,000 to repair the facade of the Columbia Theater, and authorizing the grants administrator to submit the grant application. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the System Solution of Paducah, Kentucky, in an amount... of Paducah, Kentucky, in an amount of $38,910.23 for the procurement of a new security system for City Hall. A municipal order, a municipal order adopting and approving the execution of a memorandum of agreement between the City of Paducah and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, in the amount of $650,000 for improvements to the South 25th Street.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Our new grants administrator has been very busy.
Busy, it's impressive, there's some big stuff there, really good stuff.
All right, we're gonna move on to ordinances up for adoption, and Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance amends Section 106-126 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to raise the insurance premium tax from 6% to 7%. The increase of the insurance premium tax will provide additional revenue that is necessary to assist in the funding of employee pensions, as well as the funding for the design, construction, administration, and construction of an indoor recreation and aquatic facility for use by the citizens of the City of Paducah. The full text of each section that imposes taxes shall be published in accordance with KRS 83A.060.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Questions?
Comments?
Commissioner Wilson, is that okay?
Well, I was gonna move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting, in order to allow for public comments related to Item 2A regarding the insurance premium tax before said item is voted upon.
Second.
Gonna call roll on that?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Before we do that, Commissioner, would you like to make a comment, or, you wanna hear a public comment before you make yours?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, I think I have three for this.
Good evening. I'm with Paducah Athletic Club, a family-owned business for 22 and a half years. We were in the business, in the health and fitness business, we started a gym in 1997, was approached by the Paducah Swim Team in around 2000 to put in an aquatic center. They came to us wanting to put in this nice aquatic center, they said that they could do, bring some money to the project. We said, you know, we, we'd like to hear, hear about it. They said they'd put in $100,000, the project would cost between $675,000 to $750,000. Well, we decided to put in some indoor tennis courts at that time, and we got a loan for 100, or for $1.2 million. $1.2 million was spent, and we still hadn't finished the aquatic center. We're still paying on that today, we're still in debt, close to a million dollars. And I hear about this facility that the city's going to get behind, and we're gonna raise taxes and hotel taxes and whatever this, this tax is here we're talking about, I don't understand. And I had people asking me all the time, what is, what's going on, and I'd say, well, I'm trying to figure it out. So, I just, I think that, you know, if I was to ask you how you would feel if, well, Mrs. McElroy, if we were, the city was to get behind a, a heart center, you know, the city's gonna provide heart surgeries for all the city, and, or whatever business that you might be in. I think you might have some questions that, I think, you would think that it's gonna affect the livelihood of my, my, my family. So, we struggled for many years, filed bankruptcy when the taxes on our, our property went up, we went, we, we put a piece of farmland, and the taxes came in after, after we reassessed, and we couldn't pay them. We were forced to go into bankruptcy situation. We struggled for many years. Not until four years ago, we took, took a new approach, and Planet Fitness was coming to town, I thought, well, it's, it's, we're closing our doors, finally. Took my son down to, to the Planet Fitness at 10:30 at night, they'd been open a month. We counted 75 cars on the parking lot and 100, 100-plus people in there working out. And he says, oh my gosh, we got Roger, and, and that's my brother, who's standing back in the back, who takes care of our aquatic center daily. And he said, we have Roger back there at our place, you know, what's, what's up with this? And I said, it's that low rate, it's that new equipment, it's, you know, it's, you know, he said, what are we gonna do? I said, I don't know, I said, he said, well, if we can't beat them, let's join them. I said, well, we'll be out of business next month if we go back and tell all of our clients that we're gonna drop our rates down, you know, but we, we, we came up with a way, and we, we turned things around. I'm, I'm very proud to say that everything that we're doing, you're continuing to see us doing improvements. Last year, we spent more than $100,000 with the help of the swim team, with the renewal of a contract for three years, but they only wanted to do a three-year contract because we know that they are looking to have a facility by the end of 2021. Our contract goes till August of 2021. You know, the swim team was the one that come to us to put this aquatic center in, and it wouldn't have been built, but they were the ones that came to us, as they, I know they've come to the city. And I think that what I'm hearing initially, there's eight million, I heard Dr. Patel speak.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, Mr. Hagan, because we had a timer.
Can I speak on behalf of?
If you don't mind wrapping it up.
My mother?
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Just need 30 more seconds. That, you know, it was eight to nine million dollars, now we're hearing 20 to 22 million dollars. I just, I feel like that if, if there could be something that, you know, consideration, you know, I know that the hotels around here probably not want to pay the taxes, you know, and the, the, the people of Paducah would probably have something to say about their taxes being raised, so I'd like to hear more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. We're gonna use the timer, we missed that opportunity, but thank you so much, Mr. Hagan.
While I'm speaking on the same subject, I've studied, well, I remember I came back down here two, three months ago, and you're all gung-ho, we've been to E-Town, a battered sports complex, and I thought, that's what you're just gonna do, and then we go over this swimming pool deal, and it seems like it just sort of got surprised on us. And that does seem like a whole lot of money for a, a swimming complex. I mean, we've got Brooks Pool, we've got the Paducah Athletic Club, the surrounding cities have got, like Marion's got the hub, which has been having lots of troubles because they've had all kinds of unexpected expenses, they had like $2 million, had to do work on it, it was built in 2015. Then you've got the YMCA in Mayfield, which has like 3,000 members, has a pool, not that big a pool, but I mean, you're drawing from a small area, that site that has a YMCA. And then I looked again at those figures on the aquatic center, and they seem awful blown up. For example, why, you have a parks department, why would you spend $75,000 for a management contract the first year, when the other cities don't hire outside managers, they run themselves? And then again, I was looking at that total, and I come up with the thought, I mean, I realize that's pretty far along, that aquatic center, but for example, you could have put a bubble on the pool you've got, which I think is an Olympic pool, for maybe a few billion, I mean, they've had a bubble and cape for, served them well for like 30 years, they are looking at a new pool. But then you could, for example, you go look at Hopkinsville, y'all were talking into an indoor sports center? Well, Hopkinsville just built one, 54,000 square feet, next to their convention center, which is a multipurpose building, they can also use it for stuff, anything. It's drew 70,000 people in the first nine months. I mean, you could look ahead, if you had a building like that, and attached it to the convention center, you would draw lots of people downtown, they, they just building a Holiday Inn at the convention center in Hopkinsville, and then you're looking at redoing the convention center, getting its business back, and that would be an ideal way to spend part of that money, and then spend part of it on a bubble, and then you're gonna abandon the Noble Park, which served the city well for decades, and if it hadn't been going to neglect to begin with, you wouldn't have lost all the ball tournaments. So, I mean, it just looks to me like there'd be a better way to spend all that money. So, just my suggestion.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it.
Thank you for allowing me to talk. I want to, first of all, thank Brandy Harless, Mayor Brandy Harless, and the City Commission for considering this project. I understand it is a big number, and we have developed Friends of the Parks as a nonprofit entity to kind of help. This did start as a, as an initiative to get a long-course pool, and we have talked about doing the bubble, we've done all this research about, we've gone back and forth around, around every possibility on how to get this done. It now, in our, in our eyes, turns into more of a, what does this city need, and why is this important for this city? So, I have a list of reasons why. First of all, this is more than a pool, it is a, there are basketball, volleyball courts also, as well as big walking trail, indoor walking path around. This is long overdue, this has been something that has been coming up since 1966 here in Paducah. If we don't do this now, the cost is gonna continue to escalate. This will increase Paducah's potential for hosting meets and tournaments, swim meets, basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments, any kind of tournament. It gives Paducah an opportunity to shine amongst all the other cities around, will increase economic growth, it will attract young professionals here. We really don't have a whole lot for our youth to do. We are struggling to bring young professionals in because people, there's not a target, there's nothing for our youth to do. It will increase our capacity to also teach swim lessons, and I know the PAC does swim lessons as well, this is a number-one lifesaving skill that our kids in the city need access to. Drowning is the number-one cause of death in young people, and especially in the poverty-stricken areas, so it is an investment in Paducah's health. If we can't invest in our health, we have nothing. It will also increase the revenue being located in the city to attract citizens of all ages, 0 to 100, to swim, walk, play. I just can see this as being a center hub of, of all kinds of activity, healthy activity. It will also help us to develop a legacy here in Paducah, and it's time that we outshine these surrounding areas, and maybe it could bring us to a point where we could get a target. That's all I have.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Abraham, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And looking at this, listen to the comments, and I, I spoke to the mayor earlier, when we have an ordinance up for passing, you have that first, you have that first reading, and after that first reading, I've always used it to, okay, let's, let's look at, let's look at this ordinance, let's, let's talk to some constituents, let's, let's pull it, poke it, look at the reason why, all of that, prior to the final vote. But for me, that's how I've always used that, first reading. And this is, this is my, my stance on this. I'm a very competitive person, always have been, never shy away from it. But in looking at this, this project, one of the things that kept turning in my head is that I don't want to compete with the private sector. If I'm a private sector guy, I don't mind competing with the guy across the street, we both selling burgers, let's see who's got the best burger. However, I don't want to compete with the municipal. I think I am totally, totally for fitness. The numbers that came out in the, in a brochure that Ms. Spencer put out on, on, on the internet, on our, on our website, all of those numbers from the Heart Association, I agree with them all. But I also know that just because you build a state-of-art facility, and maybe not with all the bells and whistles, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna get about the, off the couch. So, when you look at our fitness, let's just look at our fitness situation here in the city, because we want to, part of this is gonna be membership pay. So, where's that gonna fall? I mean, if you look at the city right now, you got $10 a month, and then you have, if, without any special, which a bunch of specials are coming up, guys, because it's January 1st, New Year's Resolution, and all of that, let's say 45 bucks a month, 35 bucks a month. So, where, where are we gonna land in that? Somewhere between 10 bucks a month and $35 a month, we're gonna put that there. And I know there's some scholarship talk about that also, but we're still gonna compete with the private sector. And I just don't, I just don't feel that that's, the City of Paducah as a municipal, that's where we should be. Now, we have athletic fields, we should absolutely enhance those to the max. We have walking trails, and here's the other thing, when we did our survey, if you really looked at what the top three deals were, they weren't ball fields, and there weren't athletic facilities, they were walking trails. So, I'm fine with that, walking trails, you can go out, you can do that, you're paying for it. But I just, I don't feel that our mission, if you will, is to incorporate projects that's gonna compete with the private sector. So, that's, that's my personal view on that, my own opinion on that, and I reserve the right to hang on to it.
Fair, fair. Well, I would like to bring us back for a second to where this came from, and, well, first of all, we found documentation from the Parks Department from 1966 that our community's been talking about the need for an indoor recreation and aquatics facility for a really long time. Back in January, this commission got together and did a retreat around our strategic plan, and we determined as a commission that one of the highest priorities of this commission was to move forward with developing an indoor recreation and aquatics facility. And so, since then, we have been focused on, on doing that. A few things that I want to recall from this process, when we were looking at sites, and Commissioner McElroy and I were actually at that meeting when they were looking at sites, and there were a lot of sites available, if you remember, there was two at Noble Park, there was one downtown, there was one by, I think, by Tillman. And the way that the team, the Los Design Team, helped us to narrow down where that site should be was based on a lot of different metrics, but one that really stuck out to us, if Commissioner McElroy recalls, was the population base, and they pulled data that, that showed how many people could walk within a half-mile to a facility. And the site that has been chosen as the place to move forward with this investigation, to see if it fits there and will work there, is at Noble Park. And they also pulled income data, and that location was the center of a population in Paducah that is lower-income, that has less access to things that we're talking about, is right across the street from the Oscar Cost Boys and Girls Club, whose membership is growing rapidly. And when we chose that site, which wasn't my number one, by the way, my number one was downtown, I got so excited that this project quickly turned into an equity project, that we were, we were lowering the bar and allowing for more access to things like health and wellness. So, I'm excited about that. I'll never forget when Betty Dobson from the Hotel Metropolitan
I'll never forget when Betty Dobson from the Hotel Metropolitan came to me when I first took office and was advocating for us to do a project around swimming lessons, because it's very well-known that that's actually a fairly high cause of death, which is really surprising to me. And I still have to dig into that more to understand it better. But she came to me saying, and the African-American population actually was disproportionately affected by this. I'm still trying to wrap my head around that. And so, she was advocating for that. So, I'm sharing all this with you to say that I think this conversation has been building. I'm excited that we've brought on a group of people in helping us build something that's sustainable. I had a really good conversation with a friend of mine last week about thinking about the long term and sustainability. And the one reason why we did ask our community to start a Friends of the Parks organization, I know Commissioner McElroy is sitting on that group, is so that we're creating a long-term endowment, so that the taxpayers are not the ones having to foot the bill when we do have maintenance issues, when we do have long-term issues. And so, there's a big goal there. But our community has raised millions of dollars for arts organizations. The goal for the Friends of the Parks, I think, is still 10 million over a long period of time. And $10 million in endowment can pull off a lot of interest to help with these kinds of things. So, what I'm excited about is that we didn't just wake up one day and say, let's spend 20 million, $22 million of taxpayer funds. We have dug in with a lot of very smart people to figure out how we're going to make this thing work for the long term. And I want to lastly say that the way that we're thinking about managing this thing long term, and I know Ron brought up the management piece, the company that's working with Los is called SFA. They provide statistical analysis, financial analysis around how to make these things work. They also have this management arm. And they are a potential partner that has done this in many other communities. Let's don't pretend like we know how to do this. Let's actually hire a company who knows how to do it, who has proposed to break us even within five years. And let's work with a group that's more sophisticated and can get us there. So, I firmly believe that we are doing this in a very responsible way. I think we're providing our community with something that they've been asking for, for a long time. And so, I'll stop now, because I bet you all have something to say about this. But I'm really excited, and thank you, Jim, for moving this ahead. I really appreciate your hard work in this. Absolutely.
Yeah, when we moved here 30 years ago, we knew we were moving into a community that did not have good athletic facilities for children. And we really hoped they would come along. I think Melanie Patel said the same thing when they came, that they assumed those would come along. As we have tried to recruit help, professionals to join practices and other opportunities, it has been a negative always on the lack of good fields, the lack of indoor pools that are central to the city, where kids can learn to swim, where senior adults can get therapy. We're really hoping for a medical partner to come in and do hydrotherapy. We don't have a good location. If you want to do water aerobics in the city of Paducah, it's not easily available to you. And I'm getting concerned about that here soon. So, I toured, I think I said this last time, I toured a facility very similar in Coleman, Alabama, a few weeks ago. We're talking runouts, slides, and climbing walls, fun things. I mean, it's going to rain through Thanksgiving, you all, what am I going to do with my grandchildren? You know, these are the kind of things where kids can stay active. And if you look at children in school, our society is getting more obese all the time. We have got to do more things to keep kids active. There's not just one answer. There's a multitude of answers. And we need to be on the cutting edge of that. And I'm super excited about that. Everywhere I go, families, young and old, people my age that have their kids returning and have grandkids, are super excited about these things. Paducah is finally getting ready to move on this, and I'm really excited and proud for us.
I will just add that I have been hearing about the need for this for many years, even back to Governor Beshear, about the thought about asking the state for funding, asking for all kinds of stops. I have been involved back to 1966, but I've been involved at least for eight to 10 years, hearing from this community, the plea for that. Now, there was also interest in building more sports fields. This has really been a win for our community that we were able to establish the Sports Commission with McCracken County, so that they can build those sports fields from that area, which left it, left it the ability for us to go for the rec center and aquatic center. So, it's really like a double celebration in our community, because the Sports Commission is moving forward to find the locations and to build the sports parks, as Ron mentioned, that's happening. And now this for the swimming and the aquatics and an indoor walking trail. You talked about walking and indoor walking trails. So, I do hope that we can find a medical partner.
And it's a big walking trail. It's not one you're going to get dizzy on. Almost a quarter of a mile.
I have been hearing about the need for a long time. So, I'm glad that we finally are having the ability to move forward.
Absolutely. Any other comments before we vote? No? All right. Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes.
And Commissioner McElroy?
Okay, get comfortable. Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky general obligation bonds, Series 2020A, in the appropriate aggregate principal amount of 22 million, subject to be permitted adjustment, increasing the principal amount of bonds by up to 22,200,000, or decreasing the principal amount of bonds by any amount, for the purpose of financing all or portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, equipping, and installation of a municipal sports and recreation facility located within the jurisdiction boundaries of the city. Approving the forms of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of a notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchaser for the purchase of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinance. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of a general obligation bonds designated as Series 2020A in the approximate principal amount of 22 million, the bonds, by the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of financing all or portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, equipping and installation of a municipal sports and recreation facility located within the jurisdiction boundaries of the city, consisting of, without limitation, an indoor aquatic facility with competitive swimming, warm water, and therapy amenities, basketball, volleyball, weightlifting, fitness, running, and walking amenities, concession amenities, viewing areas, locker rooms, childcare space, and meeting space. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of a bond payment fund, for the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on February 1st, 2020, and each February 1st thereafter through February 1st, 2030. The bonds pledge the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city, and provision is made for the collection of a tax to be, to pay the principal and interest on the bonds, subject to certain credits, as provided in Section 7 of the ordinance. The full text of each section that imposes fees or taxes shall be published in accordance with KRS 83A dot zero six zero dot.
Say again.
Get us enthusiastic for that.
Say again.
That's great. Any comments about this one?
Mayor, this, I'm sorry, I didn't look up. Was anybody else? Again, this, the debt that this will incur, and even though we're looking at, we identified in the ordinance above it, a way to lessen that. It's, I keep going back to my, it's a touchdown every time on the chalkboard. But when you get into it, pieces move. And we have so much, we have so much on our plate that, outside of here, that we have to come up with revenue for. And I know that some of our, some of our ball field enthusiasm has been somewhat shifted a little bit to the county. I'm a little worried about the county. You know, they have some financial struggles of their own. And they're trying to, they're trying to do some things. And I applaud them for that. But some of the, some of the issues that we have with our own ball fields, and Commissioner Wilson, you were talking about, we've heard over a period of years about everybody leaving town on the weekend, going and taking their travel ball team to Jackson and all these other places. And I'm like, yeah, we should have all of those folks staying here. And that's us doing our own, doing our own, taking care of the property that we have. Now, that seems to be shifted to the Sports Commission. And I just feel that we, if we're going to, this kind of money right here, I'm really feeling that it would be a fraction of that to get our ball fields state championship ready to host state tournament games. So, my feeling on this part of the, I think this ordinance and the one that above it kind of goes together. So, I think you know how I feel about that.
No comments? I do want to draw, do you have a comment?
No, I was just going to say, we have shifted the sports to, the fields to the Sports Commission, but that's very much a part of the city. We sit on that. We are represented, we're doing that together. It's just a structural thing. But we are very much a part of the soccer fields and baseball fields, softball fields, very much. This is a bold move. It's scary at times. But I think back to the Carson Center, and those were scary days when we did that. And I think it's time for us to be bold on this. We've got that under control. We've got some debt rolling off. This is a good time to borrow money. Interest rates are low. Is that right, Jim?
That is correct.
And so, I'd say I'm going to be bold. You know, I'm excited about this.
Great. I do think it's important to, and I just was thinking about this conversation, and it's been a couple of months since we did do the Sports Commission thing. And if you recall, we did all approve a five-way in our local agreement, holding each other accountable to pieces of this sports and recreation conversation. So, this has been a bigger picture conversation for a long time now. Also, recall that the new transient room tax is actually helping to fund the new sports. So, to your point about the county struggling, which they are for sure financially, there's a funding source there for that. So, that's really good news.
And that's restricted. I mean, that has to go to that.
It has to go towards that, absolutely. So, I think that's important. I think we've done a lot of good groundwork here, and really creative groundwork for our community to see a lot of things happen at once. I know that's unusual for this community. But again, to your point, being bold is important. I want to point out how we're going to pay for this debt for a minute, because I think it's a really interesting way. So, first of all, of course, the insurance premium tax raise. I do want to point out that 1% increase that we just passed is a dollar additional to every $100 in insurance. So, if you kind of start calculating your own insurance premium, which, by the way, I pay a lot of insurance, and I think I sent that to you all, in fact, my personal numbers and my business numbers. So, $1 additional for every 100 for our citizens are going to get us a recreation center halfway paid for. The other part of how we're going to pay for this over time is, historically, the city of Paducah has bonded other debt. So, for example, the convention center, when they built the expo, was bonded. There's still a little bit of debt left on that. There was some related to the Carson Center that the city supported. The Noble Park pool, if you guys remember a couple of years ago, it was rehabbed completely on the outside pool. That is, has been under debt. So, there's a lot of debt that the city carries, okay? That debt has come on the books at different times and will come off the books at different times. We're in the window of that debt getting paid off. And so, the other part of how this debt is going to be paid for, this $22 million, is part of that debt being freed up. So, this won't come out of the general fund. This will be funds that are getting freed up as debt is getting paid off from old projects. That is really responsible, in my opinion, and a creative opportunity that we uniquely have right now, as those long-term debt obligations are now getting paid off. So, I'm excited about that. I think that, I'm seeing Alan Rhodes in the room right now, actually. And if he were sitting up here, he'd be having this conservative, really good conversation with us about this too, as Commissioner Abraham is. So, I do think it's important for us to challenge ourselves, to be thinking about how we're going to do these projects in a creative way. And I'm proud of the way that we have figured out how we can afford and pay for this project for the future.
That's what said, Madam Mayor, the debt service itself, our annual debt service payment will not go up. You know, and basically, like when you do an investment ladder, this is a debt service ladder, it's just the reverse. So, basically, as we have the current debt issues that roll off the books, if you will, then the waiver structure in this debt issue, the principal and interest will apply to the new wellness center. So, it is good timing, and it couldn't be done without the approval of the 1% increase in the insurance premium tax. And I think the Board of Commissioners for taking a stance on that. That's really going to make this project happen. And by, if this bond issuance is approved, of course, it's going to keep things a little tight over the next five to six years. But then, as we, if we want to continue to keep that debt service payment the same. And then, once we get past those years, of course, more capacity will free up too for additional debt services that'll be available to the city.
I know, last time you talked, you gave that, what the other cities around us, insurance premium tax, several of them have been listed tonight. Mayfield, you mentioned, several others. Our insurance premium tax, even with the increase, is still below most of those cities.
That's right.
Maybe all of those cities, all of those cities that have been mentioned, including Owensboro, including Elizabeth Town. And we all know that Elizabeth Town, as I've said many times, funded their sports complex through a restaurant tax that they were able to do. But Paducah doesn't have that ability.
Any comments about this? Commissioner? Ready? All right. Roll call, please.
Oh, you were saying, go ahead, right?
Oh, yeah, I said, we'll see.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes.
And Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Approved Contract Amendment Number Two with HDR Engineering, Inc., for a piece, for a price increase in the amount of $46,689 for professional design services for the Greenway Trail Phase Four project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah approves and authorize the execution of Contract Amendment Number Two to the contract with HDR Engineering, Inc., for the Greenway Trail Phase Four project. This amendment increases the contract cost by $46,689 for additional labor hours already completed, final record drawing, final walkthrough, and approval of remaining payment application resulting in a total contract price of $134,189.
Any questions on this? I know Rick Murphy came up and gave us an explanation of this at the last meeting. Does anyone have any questions? No? All right. Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, authorizing the city manager and finance director to implement service fees for the acceptance of credit card, debit card, and e-check payments by the city of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city manager and the city finance director to establish and implement a credit card and debit card service fee not to exceed 4% and an e-check processing fee of $1.50 to cover the city's cost of accepting such payment forms.
Second.
Michelle gave us a presentation last time as well. Does anyone have any questions about this?
I'm just going to point out again, people, this is a new service. So, people have the option, if they want to use it, they can pay the fee. If they want to continue paying the way they were without paying the fee, they can continue to do that. It's not a new fee.
Great point.
It's a fee on a new service.
Appreciate that. Great. I noticed that the county has this option.
They do.
They do.
I chose to write a check. All right. Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner McElroy?
Yes. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Section 14-31 and 14-32 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to restrict dogs at community events. This amendment defines special community events as all events permitted within city limits, regardless of whether the city is the organizer or sponsor. This restriction shall not apply to service dogs or to dogs whose owner's residence is located within the area designated for special events, so long as all service and resident dogs are restrained by a leash or other lead that is no longer than three feet. This restriction shall also not apply to events which specifically provide located within the area designated for special events, so long as all service and resident dogs are restrained by a leash or other lead that is no longer than three feet. This restriction shall also not apply to events which specifically provide for and include the dogs may be brought into the area for the permitted event.
Second.
I think we're gonna suspend the rules for public comment also for this.
Okay.
I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting, in order to allow for public comments related to Item 2E regarding dogs at special events before said item is voted upon.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. And we have Philip Ham. Would you like to speak?
Commissioner? Earlier this week, I shared a couple of my concerns about this ordinance in an email. Unfortunately, it didn't get responded to by several commissioners. It's, to put it simply, to have an ordinance like this with responsible dog owners who, you know, have taken the time to train their dog and, you know, knows how their dog is gonna behave around people and around crowds, it's almost seen as a punishment. You know, I'm a resident here, and, you know, I just like to have my dog in the places that I go and enjoy the same events that I enjoy. You know, there's a new business on Broadway, there's a dog boutique. Do you think it maybe reflect negatively that the city is just gonna say, well, here's this ordinance now that could impact your business negatively if dog owners don't feel comfortable, you know, going to certain events? What would make them feel comfortable? Just going day-to-day activities. I don't think it's fair. I would hope, and I would urge all of y'all to reconsider if you do, you know, think about adopting this. You know, if we do adopt something like this, we should say, you know, we shouldn't have barbecue at Barbecue on the River because of choking hazards. You know, if this is a public safety issue, then we should take everything into consideration and not just the possibility of a dog biting somebody. You know, somebody could choke on their barbecue sandwich. Or, you know, somebody shouldn't bring their children that are under the age of 18 because they're unpredictable and unruly sometimes. Just, I think we should take all those things into consideration if we're just gonna talk about banning dogs. That's really all I have.
Thank you, Philip. All right, other comments, Commissioners?
Yeah, Commissioner Watkins sponsored this or brought this issue to us and helped sponsor this ordinance. He was concerned because of things he saw at Barbecue on the River specifically involving food and small children and dogs, big dogs, all at the same level. And I think he got alarmed about dogs being at that festival. And that is a very tight festival. It's crowded, so if you get a little intimidated, sometimes you can't get away. I ask our city manager to prepare a list of all the different events we have, and there's a lot of them. And some of them are very small, and I think the threat for public safety there is not really a concern. Commissioner Watkins also had some discussions with people from the Lower Town Arts Festival. Again, a nice event, but not that packed, crowded, I can't escape if there's a dog. So he would like us to table this. He asked if I would share that, so if he's listening, I'm doing what you told me to do. And I also agree with that, because I had some conversation with some of the people involved with barbecue, and they kind of feel like they're taking the fall on this. They don't want to be blamed for no dogs anywhere. And they suggested, at their request, that we bring all the players to the table, like the health department, because they have some concerns about dogs being around food. Our police, we've had some statements, but really sit down and hear a little bit more from them. The parks, who do the permitting. And let's look at this again, we don't have a lot of outside stuff coming up now because it's cold, so we've got a little bit of time. So it was his recommendation, and I'll make that in the form of a motion, okay, that we table this till we can have further discussion and come back with something, hopefully, that will address a little bit broader concern.
Second.
So write that down, Lindsay.
Any discussion about that?
Yeah, just a couple. One, I, my motive for bringing and I guess supporting what Commissioner Watkins initially brought is all about the safety, not only for the citizens, but also for the dog. I have, I have two dogs. I've had dogs most of my adult life. They're family. You know, they get sick, you take them to the doctor, you make sure that they know what's what. Being, also talking to, if we're gonna have that conversation, let's have that conversation. Let's get some professionals in with our vet. I think some of you guys had, saw the email from a longtime dog warden here with McCracken County, and he just laid out exactly that, you know, dogs aren't people. And we love our dogs like people. We bathe them. We do all of those things like a child. They're our babies. But when they're out, they're not people. They're dogs. And certain things may happen, and we don't want a situation to happen where we have a person injured and then we're looking at, contemplating doing something to someone's pet. So that, that's my only reason for wanting this ordinance. It's not about, it's not about barbecue on the river. I mean, they're doing, they do a wonderful job for the 501(c)(3)'s nonprofits. It's not about that. It's about, it's about the dogs being there in that event with that mass of people. So I think we need to keep it simple, though, and not complicated. But by tabling it and we having some conversations, we'll see how that comes out.
Any other comments? No? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
This is to table, correct?
Yes. To table.
Yes.
Commissioner McElroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Harless?
Yes. All right, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of an alley between 600 and 606 Broadway, 105 and 111 South Sixth Street, and 603 Kentucky Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah does hereby authorize a closing, closure of a portion of an alley between 600 and 606 Broadway, 105 and 111 South Sixth Street, and 603 Kentucky Avenue, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute all quick claim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, excuse me. This alley closure has come at my recommendation based on the improvements, I guess, in the renovation of the urban cobb. Modern building codes require that a generator be provided for that entire building for its emergency exits. They do not have any area on site to put that, and it would be very costly to put the generator inside. They do have a parking lot that they own across from the alley. So this was a solution to close the alley, allow them to pass their electric lines under the alley. The public will have access through the alley. It's gonna be, I guess, what would you say, invisible to the use of the public. However, it will transfer ownership and maintenance to the urban cobb for them to take care of as it's their need for that. So we'll get to experience the alley as we always have. We'll have rights to enter and exit as the general public will. However, the ownership and maintenance and responsibility will transfer to the urban cobb building owners.
Are they paving their parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Well, they've paved a portion of it today.
I sort of noticed.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions for Rick? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on. Chief Kyle, are you leading this discussion? The discussion?
You're open to it.
Well, your name's on here. Looks like you brought someone with you.
Just in case.
Okay.
You guys don't, do you guys have anything in front of you to look at with this?
Yes. There's an ordinance.
Okay, good. As a part of our code enforcement procedures and items that we look at, junk cars are one of those things that fall into that category. It's in the, it's in the property maintenance code, and it's in our ordinance currently as it stands today. The problem that we've found with what's in our ordinance is that we don't really have a good way to mitigate what we find. So, you know, we can fine them for having a junk car that's sitting out there unsightly for a long period of time, but we can't, we're not, we don't have really anything in our ordinance that allows us to go get that car. Now, we have done that in years past. I can't remember the last time we specifically done it, but we've also, we've also bought cars that we towed off. That was prior to me, thankfully. But that has occurred in the history of us enforcing this part of the code. So what we bring for you, before you tonight, is to look at the change in the ordinance. We're recommending a change in the ordinance with some definitions to clearly define what types of cars that we're specifically looking at, what type of fine we're specifically looking at, and what type of action we're specifically looking at when it comes to junk cars. That would allow us to take action to remove the car should the owner not abate the violation. Then it also gives specific stipulations of who we're to notify in the event that we are going to tow that car. That way, and this has been completely reviewed by legal, and believe this is what, what we have presented before you is something that will hold up if we get challenged on it later down the road. Now, you could choose to do nothing, and that's certainly an option, or you could choose to look at what we've presented before you. And then as a third option, I thought I was moving it. Somebody else is moving it. There's, there's a specific timeline that we've highlighted in there that we're recommending. You could extend that timeline if you should so desire. Now, there are a lot of junk cars that are out there. Cars that aren't moving, doing anything, got trees growing up through them, all four tires are flat, you know, cars covered up with mold. I mean, just, you know, you can imagine, we're not talking about just going and getting somebody's car off their, off their property. These are things that have been there for quite some time, is what we're looking at. Things that guys see in the field every day when they're out there for long periods of time. With that, I would take any questions that you have.
I'll start us off.
Sure.
Is this like, I didn't get a chance to read this yet, because this is the first time I've actually seen this, I think.
Okay.
But I'll ask a few questions that might have been here. So is this like junk cars that are in the front yard? Like, what if I have a fence in my backyard and I have?
Seen from the public way.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Not getting up on top of your fence to see.
Okay. Thanks. What if you're really tall?
Seen from the public way. Now, that could be, but you could see it from the alley if you didn't have a, if you didn't have a fence.
The fence up there.
But this is seen from the public way.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief, my understanding is too, that this was kind of vetted through the Western Kentucky Code Association. You guys worked as a group with the city attorney when you developed this ordinance. The city attorney's also looked at other cases in the Commonwealth of Kentucky where this has been upheld. And also on top of that, we're not talking about just a rapid outleash of code enforcement activity as soon as this is approved, if this is approved by this body. You're talking about doing a educational campaign.
Yeah. And thanks, city manager, for doing that. We have a group that meets regularly, West Kentucky Code Enforcement Officers, and this is an area-wide problem. Everybody's looking at what to do with it and how to do it, and just in general, because it's a, it's a problem, as identified by many communities, things that just don't make your community look good. So that's first. And we've been working on it as a group through, or as an area group, to try to come up with what to do. Secondly, one of the things that the group came up with was talking about doing a media blitz and trying to work with some of our local towers to, you know, they can get the car, they can dispose of the car, kind of a deal, something like that, where it would get someone to engage that might not otherwise be willing to do anything with the vehicle. That way, we're not citing them, we're not towing the car off. You know, it allows them a way to dispose of it if we can get salvage operators to participate. Now, we haven't chased that yet, but that's one of the things we want to chase as well, and see what we can, see what we can work out. Before we would, before we would start the enforcement of this action, should you all decide you want to move forward with it?
No, the, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, okay, somebody calls and, my neighbor calls and complains that I've got a.
We already get those, by the way.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Walk me through this, though. My neighbor calls.
Not about Commissioner McElroy, though. Her neighbors are not.
Oh, yeah. We got one, we got one today for her.
A neighbor calls and complains that I've had a car sitting out there for six months in my yard. The tires are flat, it's rusty, a tree's growing through it. Walk me through this new, what you think, you know, what your Western Kentucky group has come up with. What would happen?
Well, it's not something new. The procedural part of it's not new.
Right.
You know, we're gonna go inspect it and tag it.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, just tell me what, you know, time-wise, what's gonna happen?
We will, when we get the complaint, we will go tag the vehicle. They'll have 30 days to do something with the vehicle.
Any fine at that point?
No fine at that point.
No fine yet, okay.
We will leave, we'll send them a letter, tag the vehicle. At the end of that 30 days, we'll go back and follow up and see if they have removed the vehicle. If they have not, then we will send them a $100 fine. Then after 60 days, if the vehicle is still there, we will have the vehicle removed. If the vehicle was removed, the fine will be waived. You know, we're not placing any liens on the property or anything. The issue will become between the salvage company that has the vehicle and the owner. In order, if the owner wants it back, they'll have to deal with the salvage company to pay the towing fee and recover the vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
It could be possible that the owner says, "Thank you."
It is, yes.
Okay.
Because the salvage operators have a means to dispose of the vehicle after it's unclaimed for so long a period of time.
I'll say on my neighborhood, on the neighborhood walks, this came up actually quite a bit. And there were several neighborhoods, and the neighbors saying that they were concerned about beautification of the neighborhood, and that these vehicles have been sitting there forever, and what was there to do? And again, it was, well, we can tag it, we can lien it, that's all we really have to do.
Yeah. And this is stuff that, these are cars that are physically on private property. You know, if it's in the street, you know, our law enforcement partners take care, can tag it and take care of that. But this is on their property. So it's a clear difference, so you all understand.
Right. Other questions? Commissioner Abraham, did you have a?
Did the salvage company, how will we work with them as far as, do they just, you just call them and just volunteer and go get it? Is there?
No, we're gonna see if they're interested in participating in a media blitz that we'd like to do to highlight companies that you could call if you've got a vehicle that you want to dispose of, and they'll come get it and take it off your property. That's what the idea behind what we're trying to do.
Okay, and they're not compensated from the city?
Oh, no, 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 no.
They're just coming to get the car?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
How appropriate on the night with all the beautification awards. You'd be talking about it. So I do look at it as a way to really clean up our city.
Yes.
Just another tool in the toolbox.
It'll be change. Change is hard.
Anything else? No? All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner.
Okay, we're going to move into comments from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a few. First, just to acknowledge, as I spoke to Commissioner Wilson earlier tonight, there's so much positive, powerful momentum and energy in the room. I love seeing the crowd and love seeing all these projects come into fruition, and just the awards were just fantastic tonight. I was really moved by that and the investment that's occurring in our community right now is just fantastic. A second, to kind of build on that same thing, the Christmas parade is upcoming. It's one of the largest we've had in most recent history, over 200 floats. It's going to be big, well, floats and et cetera, you know, it's going to be amazing. And then, of course, we have the local celebrities, the grand marshal, which is fantastic, you know.
Chef Sarah Bradley?
There you go.
She was here.
She was here, that's right.
She's our grand marshal?
Dickens of a Christmas, of course, coming up. And then tomorrow night, 5:30, the walk through the park for the annual Christmas lighting out there at Noble Park is, so I invited you guys to come up to that at 5:30 tomorrow night, looking forward to that excitement, and hopefully the weather will be good. So it's just a massive amount of positive things going on. With that being said, Rick Murphy asked to see if he can use some of my time to just update the Board of Commissioners on the Broadway lights and stop sign.
Good evening again, Mayor Commissioners. I know that all of you have seen the stop sign that's in the middle of Fifth and Broadway, and we've got a lot of positive feedback from that. That actually came to us from an auto accident that took out our signal. And the signals that are down there right now are 40 years old. They were put in in the lower, not Lower Town, the downtown town lift project in the mid-'70s. And we had a study done by HDR for a traffic study and traffic warrant, signal warrant studies. And we actually have several signals in the city that don't warrant signals. How many times have we driven down Broadway, sat at Seventh, or Sixth, or Fifth, and there's no cross-traffic, and you wait, and you wait, and you wait, and then eventually you can go? Well, actually, we're looking to convert Sixth and Seventh the same as Fifth and put a stop sign in the middle. Now, that's unique for the geometry, because a lot of people might say, well, why can't you do that four-way stop? You can't, because the left turner's turning on to the next street. But it does work for a side street going on to a one-way. So we're going to convert Sixth and Seventh to a stop sign, a three-way stop, it's going to be in the middle. We're getting decorative signs that are, I guess, unique to our historic downtown that will accent Broadway and accent Sixth and Seventh and Fifth Street as well. And then after that's done, we'll take down the signals. Now, MUTCD requires that we flash the signals for 90 days in an all-red before we can take those old signals down. So December 1st, the signals are not malfunctioning, we're putting them in an all-red flash for Sixth and Seventh in preparation for putting in the stop signs as we've done at Fifth.
90 days, huh?
Yep.
Wow.
But during that 90 time, 90 days, though, Rick's told me that they'll go ahead and get the stop signs inserted. So basically, then, once that 90 days is up, they can remove the bag.
We'll be actually putting the foundation and things in the ground for that. We'll have the stop sign up probably for about a week. It'll be bagged, so people will see it, and then once we turn the lights off, we'll pull the bag off, and it'll work. You may have a question about parades? I've designed these to be removed during parades, and the last thing during a parade will be the sweeper, and behind the sweeper will be the stop sign being reinstalled as they go through. So.
It's a new look.
It's a new look.
Just got to get used to it.
And it's really, we've got a lot of positive feedback on that. We've had one person say, "I don't like it," but we've had a whole lot more positive feedback than negative, and it is different, so I think it'll be unique to our downtown.
When do you think we'll see the streets, the street name signs go up on your prototype?
Okay, so I'm playing with others in the...
Is it like a Christmas gift?
I'm playing with others in the sandbox. I learned a long time ago, those things that don't matter to you, let other people participate in. So I'm working with our planning department and our downtown Main Street people to maybe look at signs that are appropriate for downtown that other people can participate in as far as making those decisions. Once we make those decisions, then we'll send those off. They have to be cast in aluminum, and then they take six to eight weeks to deliver. So there'll be two months once...
Not Christmas.
Once a decision is made.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks for the update. Appreciate it. Anything else?
The last thing I have is just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
And any comments from the commissioners tonight?
He always does first. I just wanted to update everyone on our music garden that we, the joint, it's a joint effort of the Garden Clubs of Paducah, and at this point, we have about $24,000 pledged from those garden clubs only to put in a wonderful music garden for children of all ages. I can't wait to play some of these instruments. It's been a very exciting project. We've had people that want to donate, phase two, we might give you that opportunity, but this is going to be a Garden Clubs of Paducah-only project. We have a lot of local, I mean, individual garden club members that want to participate. We're holding them off till all of the garden clubs have their numbers in, but this is going to be a wonderful, wonderful project for Noble Park as well, and I'm super excited about it.
Congratulations.
Just wanted to echo the city manager as far as enthusiasm about the vibe that's happening downtown. It's definitely trending up with, I spoke to the mayor before the meeting, with the bill grant that we got to finish out and enhance our riverfront will be a definitely draw downtown. Folks will going to want to come to where the action is, and we talked about it, if I'm an entrepreneur and I have resources, and there's empty buildings on Broadway, and I know that that's where the action is, I'm going to come. We may offer some incentives, but I won't need a lot, because I'm looking at, they're all two-legged people, they're walking downtown, they're doing what they're doing. So having said that, any property along that area has been greatly enhanced. There is a, we got a little bit of time. So over the long haul, I mean, it's hard to go out and say you're going to do this in five to 10 years, but with what we have coming, I'm excited about the opportunities that we do have. It's not just focused on one particular piece of property. Those properties that are located within that Tiff district are all going to be so well-attended that it's going to draw folks down. So between the Carson Center, the Convention Center, we talked, we had Frank Bennett up here talking about the Quip Museum, all of those things are going to be happening right there. So I'm excited about that. I don't feel that I'm so much in a box. I can look outside the box and see what else is around me. So I'm excited about that, and we're going to reap the benefits of enhancing that riverfront development. So that's a good thing.
Yeah, it's really exciting to walk down Broadway right now, especially that first block. I see Holly and Peter right here. Beautiful, beautiful renovations going on in that area. My kids are coming in from four different places. I'm keeping the grandkids and sending them down there, so look for them this weekend. Yeah, exciting.
There are multiple business owners on that route, so thank you all for being here.
Yes, yes. I wanted to also follow up on the bill grant. Chris McComber was in Paducah today, so I was able to personally thank him on behalf of the city for the role that he played in helping us to get that.
Wonderful, absolutely. That's very exciting. Well, I wanted to take a moment just to congratulate Kentucky Care on the groundbreaking of a new clinic on the south side. I'm really excited about seeing what they're proposing, and I think they're going to add a lot of good energy over on the south side, so I wanted to take congratulations to them. And I also want to just mention the Veterans Day event one more time. We had a debriefing meeting with the committee that put that together, and there are a lot of opportunities next year for our community to be getting involved. And so I wanted just to kind of keep plugging on sponsorship opportunities. We're going to start planning this in April of this year, of next year, and get started early. We have a lot of big ideas on how to make it even better next year. So that's it, I think. Anything else? All right.
I have a motion.
Excellent. We have a motion from Commissioner Wilson. She's tired.
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic: Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?